Hey. Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Thank you for joining us. We are going to kick off. We have a lot to cover today. It is eight o'clock. And we are ready to go. Good to have all of you with us. Thank you again for joining us. My name is Sarah Schmidt, and I'm the president and CEO of the Colorado Health Institute. I'm grateful to all of you for spending a little bit of your morning with us today. It has been a difficult year for many in the health and social policy community as the funding landscape for programs has rapidly changed and more is on the way. As we are entering a period of austerity, the Colorado Health Institute, we at CHI want Coloradans to have as much information as possible about the challenges that are facing our state and our options for addressing them. You all, Colorado, have trusted us at CHI for over 20 years to provide independent analysis that is rooted in data and evidence. And that is what we are here to share with you today. To that end, we will start with a short presentation from my CHI colleague, Joe Hannel, who will look at federal funding cuts, the special legislative session that ended last week, and some of the governor's subsequent budget actions. Then we are going to pivot and look to the future by reflecting on the recent past. And we are so fortunate to have a terrific panel of four policy veterans of the Great Recession, which began in the late 2000s. Our panelists will bring them up after Joe, and they will talk about how they navigated these difficult years and what we should be thinking about today. Now, we will take audience questions during the panel. I'll share a few more details about that before we kick off that panel. If we can go to the next slide, please. Thank you, Joe. The Colorado Health Institute is a nonprofit public health institute, and we strengthen communities and systems with trusted analysis and collaborative solutions to improve health. We don't lobby or advocate in any way, but what we do do is answer critical questions, make sense of complex issues, and support others to reach actionable solutions. And that is what we are here to do today and this morning. Now, before I turn the floor over to Joe, I just want to invite all of you to stay until the end of our webinar this morning because we will be giving a very quick update about the 2025 Colorado Health Access Survey. And I know all of you are going to want to know what's coming up with that. So with that, I'll turn the floor over to Joe.
Thank you so much, Sarah. I'm Joe Hannel. I am Communications Director at CHI. And I got my start following the state legislature as a reporter a few years before the Great Recession, which we'll be hearing about from our panelists. There I am. Hi. We're doing this webinar today because we know the news out of Washington can seem overwhelming. And that's why at CHI, we focused our resources this year on bringing context to that news and breaking it down into digestible bits that we can address one at a time. The federal funding chart we published earlier this year is part of that. You should be seeing a link in the chat momentarily. And today, we're sharing this timeline that we've put together for this presentation. There are half a dozen key dates we're going to be looking at, starting with July, when Congress passed HR1, the annual budget reconciliation bill. We'll spend most of the next 10 minutes or so on this bill. The next key date is next month, when next month, when when the first cuts hit the SNAP food assistance program. Then we're going to look at effects in the private insurance market, in Medicaid, and more cuts to SNAP. And then finally, Congress returned from its summer recess yesterday, and they have to pass a budget for the fiscal year that starts October 1st. We'll end this presentation with a brief word about that. The first thing to know about HR1 is it blew more than a billion-dollar hole in the state's current budget. It wiped out the Tabor surplus and left another $750 million to cut. This was the biggest reason the governor called a special session special session of the legislature last month. HR1 had cut federal taxes, but Colorado's tax laws closely follow the federal system. So one of the major jobs of that special session was to decouple some state tax policies from federal law. That bought the state about $150 million a year, and that's, in general, a permanent change. The state's also dipping into its reserve a little bit, but that is a temporary change that can't be repeated every year. And finally, Governor Polis announced about $250 million in cuts to state programs for the current budget year. Those include $105 million from an Affordable Housing Fund, nearly $80 million from the state Medicaid agency, including some cuts to provider rates, $16 million from Public Health, which includes a $3 million cut to our local public health agencies, and a cut for colleges and universities. Now, those cuts are going to be painful for people who rely on that money or were counting on it. But they could have been a lot worse, honestly. Our panelists will remember the massive cuts to K-12 education during the Great Recession. This year's cuts don't touch K-12. And we'll get a slight reprieve in the next budget year as only, scare quotes, about 50% or $50 million in cuts are expected from HR1 for fiscal year '26, '27. Another immediate effect of HR1 in July was to forbid Medicaid funding for Planned Parenthood. The state estimates this could affect about 14,000 Medicaid members. During the special session, the legislature decided to spend $4.3 million of state-only money in its existing budget to shore up Planned Parenthood. Now, looking to the future. Next month, we'll see the start of cuts in the SNAP program. First, some legal immigrants will no longer qualify, including refugees and asylees. Also, stricter work requirements take effect. These SNAP work requirements raise the exemption age to 65. It used to be you weren't subject to work requirements once you hit 55. They end exemptions for parents with children 14 or older instead of all children up to 18. And they end exemptions for people who are homeless, veterans, and underage 24 who've aged out of the foster system. State government is estimating these changes could affect eligibility for 79,000 Coloradans. Also, a $6 million a year SNAP education grant has been terminated. This grant was a major source of nutrition education in Colorado, and it directly served $30,000 to 30,000 people and many more indirectly. So during the special session, the legislature responded by dedicating some money from the Healthy School Meals for All program to SNAP. However, this plan depends on voter approval of a ballot issue this November. One bit of extra funding from HR1 is the Rural Provider Relief Fund. This was meant to cushion the blow of Medicaid funding cuts on rural clinics. Half the fund is going to be split evenly among the states, and the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services is going to decide how to dole out the other half. Colorado should be able to expect about $100 million from this fund. Now, moving on to January. During the pandemic, Congress boosted subsidies on the individual insurance market. Those extra subsidies, though, expire at the end of this year, and Congress declined to extend them in HR1. Partly as a result, premium prices on the individual market for 2026 are expected to jump an average of 28% in this state. When you couple that with a reduction of tax credits, customers who get a subsidy will see their out-of-pocket costs double, according to the Division of Insurance. The Division's estimating 110,000 Coloradans are going to drop out of the individual market. This could bring an increase in uncompensated care for hospitals and clinics, and that could end up affecting healthcare prices for everybody. The legislature in the special session came up with a Band-Aid solution by finding $100 million to replace some of the lost subsidies and provide some funding for the state reinsurance program next year. But it's a one-year fix, and even then, it's not going to be enough to make up for the lost federal funding. October 2026, we'll see the beginnings of cuts to Medicaid when refugees and some other legal classes of immigrants will no longer be eligible. Also, in October 2026, the next funding cuts for SNAP take place. Currently, federal government and states split the administrative cost of the program 50-50. HR1 takes that federal share down to 25%. That means the state and its counties will be on the hook for another $50 million to fund the SNAP program. And then the really big cuts begin to arrive in 2027, especially for people who qualified for Medicaid under the Affordable Care Act. Work requirements for this population begin. Eligibility for current enrollees is going to have to be confirmed twice a year rather than once for the Affordable Care Act folks. And retroactive coverage for new members is reduced from three months to one. Colorado's hospital provider fee is a major source of funding for Medicaid. But Congress begins to ratchet that fee down in 2027. Unless anything changes, those cuts will add up to perhaps $2.5 billion with a B dollars a year by 2031. Now, we don't have all day, so we're not going to go into how the hospital provider fee works. But if you're interested, you can check out the link that we're putting in the chat. Finally, in 2027, Congress will require many states to start paying some of the benefits for SNAP. Currently, the federal government pays for all the groceries the program supplies, and the state's costs are only for running the program itself. That changes in two years. The exact amount the states are going to need to pay depends on the accuracy of their current payments. Colorado's at Colorado's current payment error rate, we'd probably end up paying 10% of the cost of providing food through SNAP. So that is HR1. The other issue you'll probably start hearing about, if you haven't already, is the federal budget for 2025, '26. President Trump's budget proposes some large cuts in education, healthcare, and social assistance. The budget's supposed to be in effect by October 1st, but if the past is any guide, Congress won't make that deadline, and it will make some big changes to the president's proposed cuts. So this is probably something we'll be hearing about for a few months at least. Let's do a quick recap. The state's taken action on a number of fronts to respond to federal cuts. This includes the loss of tax revenue to funding Planned Parenthood, cuts to SNAP, and a reduction in insurance subsidies. Some of these are just fixes for a year, some are a little bit more permanent. The big issues that Colorado hasn't addressed yet are Medicaid and SNAP, and those hit mostly in 2026 and '27. So that's a lot to deal with. It looks like we'll be entering a period of maybe years when the state budget will be very tight, might not be able to address the needs of all Coloradans. We don't have an exact precedent for how to deal with this, but we do have recent experience with tight budgets from the 2008 financial crisis and the Great Recession that followed. And today, we have four people who worked closely on the state budget during that experience and who continue to be policy leaders in Colorado. We'll get their perspective on how the state can respond when money is tight and how the current situation deals with the Great Recession. So I'll stop yapping and turn it over to Sarah to introduce our panel.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you. All right. Our panel is going to start coming off there. There we go. So just a little housekeeping before I introduce our panelists and jump in. As I mentioned before, we will take audience questions. So you have a couple of options. You can use the chat or the Q and A buttons. If you'd like to ask your question out loud, please use the raise hand button, and we'll turn on your microphone. We won't get to that until a little later in our in our presentation, though, or in our conversation. So just stay tuned on that. All right. Now, let me introduce our wonderful panel with us today. I'm going to start with Mike. Mike Beasley is president of 5280 Strategies and has been a longtime lobbyist at the Capitol. Fun fact, he served as a legislative monitor for CHI for several years and had some fun conversations with Mike. As many of you know, Colorado legislators are term limited, so a lot of the Capitol's institutional knowledge lies with our lobbyists, and we are grateful to have Mike here today to share some of his experience and history with us. Bernie Busher has been actively involved in state government throughout his career. He has been Secretary of State and Deputy Attorney General and was chair of the Joint Budget Committee during the Great Recession. He is currently of counsel at Ireland Stapleton and is joining us from Grand Junction this morning. Claire Levy is a Boulder County Commissioner. She served with Bernie on the Joint Budget Committee during the Great Recession. And after she left the legislature, she was Executive Director of the Colorado Center on Law and Policy. And last but not least, Henry Sobinay has served twice as Director of the Office of State Planning and Budgeting, once for Republican Governor Bill Owens and once for Democrat John Hickenlipper. Henry is renowned for his ability to explain Colorado's complicated budget in simple terms, and he is currently Treasurer and Senior Advisor to the Chancellor of the Colorado State University System. We are grateful to have all of you here today. Thanks for your time this morning. All right, let's dive in. So I'm going to start with a question for any or all of you. First, Joe shared a bit about some of the shocks that are coming from HR1. Give us a sense of how this moment we are in, HR1, compares to the Great Recession. What was at risk back in 2009? And how did Colorado get back on track? Is there someone eager to kick us off with their thoughts? Claire, you laughed. That means you got a date.
Yeah, well, I was laughing about who would be eager to revisit those years. Just first, a minor correction. I served on the Joint Budget Committee after Bernie Busher. So I didn't have the agony. I served sort of as we were just coming out of the recession. I mean, I think I was laughing a little bit just because in the Great Recession, that there were massive economic forces that were hitting our country from a variety of sources. And so in a recession, of course, your revenues drop because people quit spending, and there's higher unemployment, et cetera. And this is completely unlike that because this this scarcity is caused by an act of Congress, and it's not the result of larger forces in my mind.
Thanks, Claire.
And I'll jump in there. And I will also correct one misconception. I didn't really serve during the Great Depression recession. I was on the JBC leading up to it. But in the years before 2004, there had been a number of cuts, and we were in the position where we could undo some of those, fix some of them. And so every organization in the state gave us plaques and awards and thank yous. So we got to do some of the good things. And then when the challenging years came a few years later, it was interesting to watch how a number of the same types of steps were taken as in this. And I think that the situation we find ourselves in now is a bit unique. Part of it is indeed caused by the the actions of the US Congress. But also, I think it's fair to say, part of it is caused by the legislature making program decisions without a long-term plan for funding those those programs. And so part of this is a self-created problem that both parties seem to talk by each other on.
Thank you, Bernie. Yeah. Michael, Henry, do either of you? Yeah, Henry, please.
I'll jump in. Good morning, everybody. I think it's interesting you're keying off the Great Recession because I do think the context we're in does matter. So to add to what Bernie said, we're further along with some trends that are just kind of hard to change. One is the demographic changes that we're experiencing with the aging population. And so this increasing demand for healthcare is something that's, you know, kind of predictable. You know, the demographers have, you know, one up on the economists. They look backwards and say, how many 14-year-olds? And then they're proud of their 15-year-old population forecast because you just go one more year forward, and you can look backwards and predict forward with some confidence. So we know the population is aging. Colorado has lost its relative advantages to the rest of the country that we had many years ago. Affordability and attractiveness and business-friendly climate have changed since that time. So some of those advantages that allowed us to grow out of the Great Recession are gone. And then, yes, the program issues are there. And then I would say that our fiscal structure is designed for these absurd results, and our legislature is not fully empowered to make the full menu of decisions that other states could make. And then, you know, we're humans, just like all the other humans. We like things, and we don't like to pay for them. And we've created a bunch of tiny, tiny carve-outs and different special programs that are popular. Taxes on ammunition, Healthy School Meals for All, gaming taxes for water, tobacco taxes, and so and then fees across many places. So the totality of the system looks bigger, but the functionality of the system gets lower and lower every year.
Thank you, Henry.
May I add to Secretary Busher and Henry's points? You know, HR1 is additional fuel on this fire that people like me see. I'm not nearly as smart and as experienced in the budget as these three are, but I can tell you that we've we knew going back to 2021 as it relates to a state budget that we were heading towards a structural deficit. We knew that the JBC staff, for example, came into the JBC in February and March of this last year and said, look, you again to the points that were just made, you're creating new spending and new programs we cannot sustain, whether it's Medicaid expansions, a new school finance act we couldn't afford, new offices and programs, new departments that were funded largely by one-time federal funds, and it's all come home to roost. And for us old folks around this process, we've been saying, you know, and I'll just be blunt, for those of you who know me know that that's how I always be. I've said very clearly, it's going to suck to be the next governor because that first budget in those out years that Joe highlighted on his slide deck is, I think, actually, I think going to be worse. And HR1 just accelerated that for Governor Polis. And I think the next couple of years are going to be terrible. And in healthcare and K-12 and higher ed and road construction, et cetera. And it's going to force the legislature to reprioritize. You know, that's what legislators are supposed to do. But let's look at the legislature. With the exception of Senator Liston, none of them have ever, until now, worked on cutting a budget, right? Their term limits has had a really dramatic effect on the legislature. And a lot of them have never experienced this, either as local elected officials or state officials. And I think for those of you in this meeting, it's going to be really contingent upon them to educate these legislators. So many of them are new. We're looking at 25 or 30% turnover every two years. And the legislature is going to be important to tell them the history behind whatever programs that you all are involved in.
Thanks, Mike. And thanks, everyone, for kicking us off. We could spend the next 40 minutes just with what you all shared. But we'll keep moving. Joe mentioned that last month, the legislature enacted both permanent cuts and temporary fixes during the special session. How did you all approach, or how do you all think about the balance of permanent and temporary actions? Whether it be during the decision-making that you were contemplating during the Great Recession or as you are thinking about the moment that we're in right now? And what do you think we might expect in the upcoming legislative session?
Well, Sarah, I'll take a cut at that. In many ways, they did the easy things. Now, I'm sure those that are there said, these are the hard things. Well, they did the easy things. Sweeping excess funds from cash funds is pretty easy. There's not really any pain involved in that. Selling tax credits is easy, but that's mortgaging the future, truthfully. I think next year's budget setting is going to start out with a number north of $1 billion that they've got a shortfall. And, you know, you can only sweep the cash funds once. These things are going to be much, much harder. There's been a mention of K-12. And if K-12 remains protected, and I understand the argument that it should be, then the cuts are going to be to provider rates. The cuts are going to be to higher ed. The cuts are going to be to distributions to cities and counties. And then we're going to really hear a hue and cry and people being upset and angry. I think that's inevitable.
I will just maybe piggyback on what Bernie said. You know, he's right about it all. You know, as far as the balance between short term and long term, in a special session, you don't have time to really craft large structural changes. And as everybody here this morning has pointed out, while I started by saying this is all caused by HR1, it's not really the case. We have, you know, the Medicaid rolls, which when I was sitting in my EDC at Colorado Center on Law and Policy, and we were watching more and more people get covered by Medicaid, we applauded that because that meant people were getting healthcare coverage that didn't have it before. But what we've, you know, what we've got is an economy that is not producing jobs that provide health insurance. So Medicaid has to pick that up. And so, you know, next session, the legislature is going to have to deal with some of these structural issues. You know, Bernie and I served when the budget stabilization factor was introduced for K-12. And that it had to have this complicated name. It was called the negative factor back then because we had a constitutional amendment that specified a certain increase in the K-12 budget every year. And that was not sustainable. Well, you know, the legislature and the governor have decided as a policy matter that they're not going to reintroduce that stabilization factor. So it has to come from somewhere else. And, you know, these one-time fixes are okay. You know, when you have, say, a recession and you can see that we're going to be climbing out of this recession, maybe in a year or two, and you're just trying to patch a hole. But, you know, it looks like the situation we're in now is really going to be an ongoing situation.
And can I add to that? One of the things that we were working on in the special session was how, you know, instead of doing tax credits in a couple of those bills to the tune of $200 million, that maybe we should just dip into the Tabor Reserve, or we should look at some of those reserve accounts as a way to get us through the next six or eight months. And there was real resistance to that, and I respect that resistance because we don't know what the next 12 or 18 months holds. Is there a recession, another recession on the horizon as a result of tariffs and tariff policy and that type of thing? And so there's a, especially with the Governor's Budget Office, which I have a deep respect for. But should we have? What was that balance? And I think there's a recession runway that we may hit here in the next year or so. And that's something that we need to plan for as well. And ultimately, where that's going to end us up, in my mind, is going to be additional permanent cuts. Because what I'm seeing with the public and the polling that I've seen Because what I'm seeing with the public and the polling that I've seen, both public and private, is there's not an appetite for a longer term, let's call it Tabor fix or state budget fix.
Yeah, I, I would just jump in with the yes and the, the prospects for next year are going to require what, what people have alluded to in terms of this reprioritization. And it sounds so, you know, antiseptic, but the, the practicality is if the line around 30% of the general fund in K-12 education stays there, healthcare, public safety and support for higher education are the biggest chunks remaining. And it, it become, it starts to just become a deeply frustrating thing. Because the, the formula and the constraints are driving the decision as opposed to what do we value the most? So the, the public understanding of what the state does and doesn't do, as well as, you know, how big it's gotten recently, and now economic anxiety, it doesn't really set the table for this thing Mike alluded to, which is the only way it can change is with a thoughtful, practical, strategic coalition-based conversation with the voters. And that just seems so far away from the current moment. So, yes, next, next session will be, will be difficult. And funding levels that, that we have now probably will not remain there. And in higher education, I'll speak from, for our group as, as a totality now, we're, we're very concerned because tuition affordability is, is what the state money really does accomplish. And so if you want to maintain a vibrant workforce, if you want socio-economic mobility, you know, higher education is a proven program, you know, in terms of generating more than, than, than the public puts in. But these choices force absurd results sometimes.
Oh, thanks, Henry. All right. I am, I just want to do a quick look here and think what we're going to do next is move to a couple of quick questions for each one of you. And then I want to get us to the audience who has some good questions that they'd like to ask as well. Mike, we're going to start with you. Mike, you've talked a lot about some of these other potential programs that are likely going to face cuts as a result of some of what we were just talking about with HR1 and the budget, which was really about Medicaid and SNAP. But of course, also some of these connections with tax changes. What about those Coloradans who are not necessarily enrolled in Medicaid or are using SNAP? We know that that's an important group of Coloradans, but there are many others who won't necessarily see those cuts or be impacted by those changes. What are some of the personal impacts that you expect Coloradans are going to start to feel as these changes start to be implemented and some of these hard decisions get, are starting to get made?
So I will say, over the last 25 or so years, that's been the biggest challenge. Going back even when we worked with Secretary Busher on Ref C and Ref D back in, whenever year that was, to 2004. And, you know, because folks really don't, they, they know exactly what Commissioner Levy is doing, in my mind. They see local government at work, but they really don't know how state government works and how it touches their lives, right? Unless you're, Henry's heard me say, unless you're, when do you interact with state government, right? You interact with state government when you're on the highway behind an orange cone. You might, you might go get your, your license plates, or in my case, you visit your cousins in jail. I mean, when do you really interact with state government, right? And so feeling the pain is something that, that they, it, it's tough to quantify. Aren't we going to see longer lines to see healthcare providers? Or are, are we really going to feel folks, are their voices going to be heard who no longer have healthcare coverage that they currently have? I can't forecast that for you. And so I think that the experience going back to when we did Ref C was creating a bipartisan coalition that showed how government needed to grow back from those original economic hits. We did things like shutting down motor vehicle offices, right? You had some, some communities had to drive 50 miles to go get your license plates. Then people understood that state government was broke, but they did it in a bipartisan way. And I don't see that bipartisanship right now at the moment as it relates to our state budget.
Mike, you, you make a really good point. Ref C would not have passed if Bill Owens hadn't gotten on board and been a strong supporter. I remember standing with Bill on a street corner here in Grand Junction with signs, you know? And the, the fortunate thing was we got it passed. The unfortunate thing is that Bill got pilloried by the Republican Party and his future political prospects were greatly diminished. And I think it's become very, very difficult for a thoughtful Republican to support any modifications for Tabor. And that, that's just put us in a really tough, tough place.
Thanks, Bernie. Thanks, Mike. Claire, love to hear your perspective. You are now in county government, as we've talked about, and in Colorado counties handle enrollment for public benefits. Can you share how you think HR1 is going to affect your counties and counties broadly? And what should be the role of our county commissioners in informing some of the decisions that legislators will be making next year?
Yeah, thanks so much for the question because it is really important to get that local perspective. You know, you were asking, Mike, well, how do people interact with their state government? And how will people actually experience any reductions, budget reductions? As, as Mike said, people really interact with their local governments a lot. We don't know yet the extent of the cost that will, that we will experience at the local level. We, we just know we will experience costs. So, you know, you ran through the, or Joe ran through the slides around work requirements, additional eligibility requirements. Counties, county employees do that work. And, and so we know there's going to be more work. The state provides some money in its formula based for county administration costs. Even in good years, it was not sufficient to cover our costs of providing that service. We, you know, we try to impress upon the state legislature, on the, on the governor's office, that these are real costs to us. And we don't have the flexibility in our budget to find other ways to pay for it because we are funded by property tax. We have a cap on the amount of property tax we're allowed to, to collect and retain. The legislature just saw fit to further reduce the property taxes that, that are available to local governments. So, you know, we're, we're in a real bind in that we don't have the ability to raise money from other sources. We don't have the ability to move funding around. We don't have these little pots of cash funds and things like that that we can sweep. And so we're going to have to make some of these really hard choices. And I think we're, you know, we're very cognizant that, that the legislature does not have a lot of options for protecting local governments. We, we just are, are struggling to communicate to them effectively that, that, you know, you may get a fiscal note that the appropriations committee or finance will consider. And, but there, there are fiscal impacts to counties that are everybody's real. And just because you don't get that fiscal note, doesn't mean they aren't there.
Yeah. Thank you, Claire. Appreciate your perspective. Bernie, you are joining us from Grand Junction, as we've already talked about. What do we need to be thinking about? What does the state, what does the legislature need to be thinking about in terms of rural Colorado when we're contemplating some of these cuts that everyone has been talking about? What are some considerations and things that you want to make sure are in the mix?
Well, it's an interesting question, and I've, I've spent a lot of time thinking about it in advance. I think some of the cuts from the federal legislation will be more direct to rural Colorado. The Western Colorado has a higher Medicaid population than most of the rest of the state. Same with SNAP. And we have pockets where health insurance premiums are disproportionately high. So, so we're going to be facing those issues. We've also seen cuts in funding for public lands for a service, things like that. So we are starting the process of trying to figure out what does that mean for Western Colorado? I have, I've, I've really not been able, and I've tried to quantify what the special session cuts mean to Western Colorado more than for the rest of the state. So I don't mean to take a pass, but it's just, it's hard to say right now.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Henry, last question to you. When you have a funding shortfall, you either raise revenue or you cut spending and services. Is there a secret third thing that we haven't been talking about? Or that is possible if we maintain services without raising taxes? Have any words of wisdom there?
Well, I think you can change the rules of the game, but that requires the process that Mike talked about. I think one area that deserves more comprehensive attention is evidence-based programming and process improvement and bureaucracy minimization or limitation. That was a very bipartisan effort, starting in about 2014 and before. Governor Hickenlooper, we had our little tagline, you know, all the taglines become jokes after a while, but we had efficient, effective, elegant. But we were able to implement lean process improvement in most state agencies at some level. We had a performance management academy. Then, then Speaker Farandino helped us establish with the budget committee. So we had a very strange, you know, two-branch effort around this thing funded by the Pew Center called Results First, where we went and looked at proven programs across. So I think a, a recommitment and a reinvigoration around that philosophy. The, the Polis administration has continued this, but it's a cultural thing. And it, it always needs to be refreshed and reemphasized. This will not fix everything. This is not an efficiency problem. However, being business-minded in a place that doesn't run like a business is essential because every dollar is very dear. And then we've talked about it, and you can't do it all the time. But they, they, they appropriately did use some of the reserve right now and saving most of it for when there is an actual recession versus this fiscal thing that happened for the summertime. So, no, there's no magic bullet, but I think the rules of the game would be what I would emphasize, and I think some of the questions relate to that.
Great. Thanks, Henry. Okay, we're going to move to a few audience questions. I'm hoping about 10 minutes for that. And then we'll do a lightning round to wrap us up with all of you. So our first audience member is John Daly from Colorado Public Radio. I believe he's going to come off mute and ask his question himself.
Yeah, I, I am. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I wonder if each of you could offer us a headline, kind of where we're at now and where we're going? What, for, for ordinary Coloradans, maybe who aren't paying attention to all this stuff super closely, what would you say the headline is? What should they know about where we're going?
We're in a very long-term expansion of the economy with a variety of headwinds, including fiscal policy, a slowing economy, and potentially this uncertainty around the national economy.
You know, John, I think I would say, not being a demographer or an economist, but, you know, being a local government, you know, a county commissioner that does face voters very directly. You know, I think, I think people will see those longer lines at the DMV, at the clerk and recorder. We, you know, we fund, counties fund the elections, local elections, we fund the jail, we fund the DA, we fund the assessor. So in addition to just the nuts and bolts of county funding, we fund all the elected offices. And we're, we're going to have to see some austerity in all of those offices across the board.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say we're going to see less government services across the board. And, and some of those services are going to cost more. And it's going to be interesting to see how the public reacts to that. Because as Henry said, we're in this world where we want more services, but we're not willing to pay for them.
And I would say the fix long-term, if, as someone who loves history like I do, we need to look at what we did in the early 2000s and 2009 and look for bipartisan solutions. And I did not see that in the special session. And it's taken a while to get into this hole, and it's going to take a while to get out.
Thank you all. So we've gotten a series of questions in the Q and A about Tabor and the prospects of overturning Tabor, the conditions required to make that happen. Who would like to respond to that broad, general question?
I, I'll jump in, but everyone, I'd love to hear people's take. I, when people say that, I'm curious what they mean. Is it the limitation on the annual, or is it the vote on taxes? The state tried to get rid of the limit, which is population plus inflation, and just let the state keep what it has from the existing taxes. That was called Prop CC, I think it was 2018, and it was demolished by the voters. So my philosophical answer is if people had a deeper connection and appreciation of what they paid their taxes for, and if they knew they'd get more value for relaxing the restriction, I think it would be relatively easy. I think Mike's point about coalition building and bipartisanship is the practical answer. And also, I, I just, I know it's uncomfortable, but I, Tabor isn't the main problem. It is a, it is a feature of these rules that don't work together. We have automatic spending, for the most part, or mandatory spending in some of our biggest areas. We don't have the taxes to pay for it. We've been cutting taxes pretty consistently. And then we've been siphoning off and building up side pots around the budget that make the budget look really big. And so the overall burden for people feels bigger than where it is in the main budget, which is education, public safety and healthcare. So Tabor is a component of, of this absurd kind of series of rules. But if it were gone tomorrow, it would only solve a, a small percentage of this current conundrum.
So I think I might jump in. I, I have a great deal of respect for Henry Sobinay. He's, he's really guided this state through a lot of challenging times. I, I think Tabor is actually a very large part of the issue. Because what it has led to uniquely in Colorado is shifting funding sources from broad-based taxes that everybody pays equally and that could be progressive, which many other states have, into just a series of fees that fund very narrow purposes. Because fees, if you tailor them correctly, are not taxes, and it does not take a vote of the people. So we've, we've divided up funding for a myriad of things into these very specialized pots of money that put all these constraints on the budget as a whole. So you can look at the overall bottom line number of, of the budget of the state of Colorado. I don't know what that number is now, but it's a very large number. And people say, well, look at that number. Why, why is there a problem? Well, because we can only use the fee, you know, the, the gaming tax for gaming purposes and, and this for this and that for that. And we can't, the legislature yet doesn't have the, you know, the, the ability to actually meet the needs of the people, you know, as conditions change. And as far as Tabor, I think, you know, we, I think we've all said this in, in various ways, that until we can get two things, one is some bipartisan support for whatever the, the fix is. fix is that that we all settle on, we need to have bipartisan support. And then the people of the voters of the state of Colorado actually have to understand the connection between the the budget and their lives. And because we've been able to do these little, to me gimmicky fixes and and things like that, um, you know, we've been pretty successful at shielding people from the actual budget situation.
I don't think we're very far off.
Yeah. Bernie, your Mike, anything?
Well, um, I think the the bipartisan effort to um, deal with Ref C back in two thousand and five was was essential. But the subject matter was also essential. Um, one-third of the money freed up was dedicated to transportation. And um, I think one of the things that in this discussion, we're not really seeing or talking about is the degradation of our roads across the state. And um, that resonated in two thousand and five. Um, I think the CC effort focused entirely on um, K twelve, or not entirely, but heavily on K twelve, didn't have that across the board. Um, appeal and it failed. Um, hopefully we can learn from that.
I've seen polling in the last couple of weeks that showed support for Tabor, generally speaking, at seventy-eight percent. So I don't really, I think um, it's hard enough to tell voters what time it is. But when we have to help explain how to build that watch to get to that time, it just makes my head hurt. And I I I'm not, my, I'll tell you what I've told my clients, there's no chance that uh, Tabor repeal passes. And Tabor reform would need to be a lengthy, you know, Ref C back in the day took almost two full years to develop and go to the voters with, cost millions of dollars on both sides, uh, for and against. And and I don't see anything like that here at all. We just had a special session related to the budget. And I don't think, I think they may have passed one bill in a bipartisan way. Everything else was straight party line. Uh, with the majority party, that is absolutely not a way to build a winning coalition.
So it's a great segue. I want to wrap us with this last question. And this is a question that's coming from one of our colleagues um, through the Q and A, Julie Ryskin. She's asking what advice you all would give to Colorado leaders about messaging the need to look at the whole of Colorado and not just our own respective silos. Um, how would you suggest a way out of some of this all or nothing thinking that seems to be more prominent um, in our national dialogue? So who would like to end with some words of advice and hope for all of us?
Well, I think um, maybe I'll I'll wade in here. It's considerable risk. Um, Julie, thanks for the question and thanks for being here. And thanks for all your work, so for so many decades on behalf of people with uh, disabilities in Colorado. Um, you know, we, I I once read a very slim little book um, years ago that made the point that um, years of messaging and framing of taxes have conditioned people to think in terms of exactly what do I get? Very transactional. I pay my taxes and I expect these things. And it's turned us all into thinking of ourselves as consumers and not thinking in terms of a broad-based social contract. So, you know, there once was an expression that was widely used, that taxes are the price we pay to live in a civilized society. And so, you know, we all pay property taxes to support our school, even if we don't have kids in school, because having an educated populace is a good thing. So, uh, you know, it's gonna take a long time to reintroduce that frame that that we have a social contract with one another. And and to the extent that, you know, we fund these things that uh, that benefit the whole, that improves us, even if we don't get a direct benefit from it.
I'm gonna put my coaching hat on. Um, and I, I got this quote from Holly Velazquez-Horvath, uh, but it's, it's out there in many places. Uh, I think it's to encourage people to be more curious than convinced. Uh, and if you can invest in a mindset around what's really wrong and why are we here? Um, the solutions might be easier to find than not. I also think if you're looking across the table and you see opposite party person as opposed to person, um, that creates a dynamic as well. Um, so I think it's the mindset um, more than the problems. We have problems, but we can do hard things. And certainly the people that came before us uh, did harder things. Um, so I feel like it's, it's a mindset issue. Thank you for the question.
I I think it's the fundamental question and and one of the things that I think we need to think about is kind of refocusing the blame. Um, it it's not gonna be useful to blame uh, Congress. It's not gonna be useful to blame uh, party politics. I think what we have to do is say, what can we do to make this better? And um, as a person who is involved over here in western Colorado with uh, the nonprofit world more than anything now, what we are asking is, you know, we've, we've had a uh, a belief that we should be making five or six percent uh, distributions out of our corpus. Well, these are pretty tough times. We need to go to a higher level. We need to start talking about uh, not saving money for tough times, but helping deal with problems now. So I think what we can all do is say, what can I or my organization do? And not look for magic solutions from other people.
And I, my hope is like conversations like this will lead organizations like the one uh, that uh, Julie participates in to really kind of build a coalition, to bring some of these policies, solutions to the legislature. We have a unique time coming up in in um, uh, twenty-six where, you know, we'll have a new governor. Uh, new, uh, I'm already looking at least twenty percent turnover in the legislature. Let's educate people and give them some good policy ideas. Um, and look towards the future and try not to react as much. But we've got to build coalitions to figure our way out of this.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for ending us with some some concrete recommendations for how we can both change our mindsets and think about ways to work differently together. Um, Claire, there's a lot of questions about that book. So if you can think of the title of it, please let us know. Um, we can send it out with the notes or with the recording from the meeting. Um, I have nothing to add to the incredible wisdom that you all just shared. Appreciate the time that you spent with us today. This will be recorded and posted online. Um, and I think, I'm not sure if we have the ability to, there we go, one more slide. Um, we're gonna be releasing the results of the twenty twenty-five Colorado Health Access Survey in this, in November. November of twenty twenty-five. More information is coming soon. These are data that reflect Coloradans' experiences across the state. And if we are trying to make decisions about one another and understand how Colorado, the issues that Coloradans are facing, the CHAZ gives us to, gives that to us um, in great detail. And we are excited to share the results with all of you. Somewhere to come on that. Thank you to our four panelists today for their time and their insights. And thank you to all of you for sticking with us until the bitter end this morning. Take care, everybody.
Thank you.